On a school board to order. May I have a motion to certify closed session, please?
Mr. Chair, I certify to the best of each member's knowledge that Williamsburg James City County School Board while in closed session discussed only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law and that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed set meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. All right, Ms. Aller, please.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ortego.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye, thank you. And we'll move on to our pledge of allegiance before we take the roll. Mr. Baker, please stand.
May I please rise? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under your God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Aller, would you mind calling the roll, please?
Dr. Beers.
Here.
Ms. Cook.
Here.
Ms. Hummel.
Here.
Mrs. Hunley.
Here.
Mrs. Ortego.
Here.
Mrs. Young.
Here.
Mr. Dowell.
Here. And if I can have an approval of the agenda, please.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Is there a second?
Second.
And any discussion? Bearing none, Ms. Aller.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ortego.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye. Okay, we just want to make sure we didn't lose Ms. Cook.
Zoom says they're waiting for the Zooms. Ms. Aller, Zoom says they're waiting for the host to start the meeting?
Looks like she's here now. Ms. Cook, are you with us?
I am. Can you hear me? I am. Can you hear me?
She was muted before. She's good now. I'm here.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Oh.
Okay, we hear you now.
Okay. Yeah, I've been here the whole time.
You've been here the whole time, okay. So you did see approval of the agenda, Ms. Cook?
Yep, and I said yes.
Okay, all right, I just want to confirm that, thank you. Didn't want to skip over you. All right. Item 4.01, announcements and superintendent's report. Dr. Heron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. February is Career and Technical Education Month, and tonight I would like to celebrate the teachers and students involved in our career and technical education program. We are fortunate to offer high-quality courses across a wide array of career clusters that prepare students for college and careers. In total, we offer forty-nine courses across the middle and high school levels in the following areas: agricultural education, business and information technology, career connections, family and consumer sciences, health and medical science, marketing education, technology education, and computer and information science. Shifting to geometry class at James Blair Middle School, we want to thank Mrs. Butler for bringing math to life. Sound waves are all around us, a single note from a piano, or waves lapping on the shore. Eighth graders in Mrs. Butler's class plotted out sound waves using spaghetti noodles. Seemingly arbitrary numbers on paper magically turned into this graph that makes a perfect curve, a great example of teaching in WJCC schools. WJCC Family Academy is hosting a virtual program next week, Cooking Up Curiosity. Join us to learn how to nurture your child's curiosity through a rich recipe planning activity using the folk tale Stone Soup by John Muth. Families who participate in the academy will be sent a Stone Soup Curiosity kit after the presentation.[892.22][892.22](APPLAUSE). Families who participate in the academy will be sent a Stone Soup Curiosity kit after the presentation for a fun at-home activity. Families should visit our website to register for the program. And finally, you may be aware that the Governor and General Assembly is in the process of adopting Senate Bill 739 that allows for student choice with regard to wearing masks in schools. As soon as this legislation goes into effect, it will supersede prior legislation, including Senate Bill 1303. As soon as it becomes law, students will have the choice immediately to wear or not wear masks in WJCC schools. A communication will go out as soon as the law is in place. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. To our board members, are there any reports that you'd like to offer?
Yes, I wanted to say that we met with CAC. That stands for the Special Aid Advisory Committee, and we had a very interesting and informative meeting. We are working on our yearly plan and working on getting ready for the Disability Awareness Month that's in March, so stay tuned for some great activities for students, teachers, and the community. And second, today, Ms. Ortego and I got to go to Berkeley Middle School for our tour and see the students there and meet some of the teachers, and we were lucky to go on this day when Mr. Chikarias had got flowers, bouquets, for every staff member, and so we were recipients of those bouquets, and it was just a very nice visit to see students and all the wonderful things that they're involved in.
Thank you, Ms. Hunley.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Tonight, we are excited to recognize several teachers for their leadership and hard work, but before we share a little about this recognition, I'd like to invite the following honorees to join us up front. Would Hornsby teacher Nicole Lofman and Lafayette teachers Carrie Moore, Christine Smith, and National Board certification is a highly respected professional certification in the field of education. The outstanding teachers standing before you completed a rigorous year-long process to examine, document, and reflect upon not only their teaching but also its impact on student learning. The process also included an assessment to demonstrate depth of content knowledge and pedagogy within their specialty. We are proud to welcome seven new National Board certified teachers for a total of sixty-four throughout the division. Three of our newest MBT teachers could not be with us this evening, but we want to congratulate them as well: Matthew Whelies, Anya Boebrenskaya, Kathleen Wheeler, and Jane Wolfe. Congratulations to each of these outstanding.[1114.42][1114.42](APPLAUSE). Mr. Chairman, I have several additional recognitions. One that I just wanted to mention briefly, we all heard of the passing of Linda Heath this past week, who was an outstanding teacher, a mentor for other teachers, probably one of the very best supervisors of William &amp; Mary Student Teachers over the years. She will be missed, and I thought it was important to recognize her this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Beers.
Now, to a happier area, I would like to ask Beth Alar to come forward, please.
(INAUDIBLE) (LAUGHING). As the clerk of the school board here in Williamsburg James City County, just a few things that I have to say about Beth. Beth is really the perfect example of going beyond excellence. She has been actually very outstanding. It's a very high curve when you come on to be the clerk of the board, but she has been able to keep track of all of us, and is very much responsible for making contacts and visits of schools, of school board members, to contract of conferences and meetings. But then, she is very conscientious about transcribing comments handed by the public to her, I mean, that public, of perception. And we very much appreciate that. So I have to give you, first of all, this is a school board, this is, actually, this week is 2022, Virginia School Board, Board Appreciation Week, and, February, September 8th, and the Virginia School Board Association presents this certificate, and as a token
Thank you, Dr. Beers. It is true that our clerk, Ms. Aller, does so many things really well, and none more so than, I think, managing the different personalities of seven different board members. She juggles us very well, so thank you, Ms. Aller. If I may, are there any other board member announcements? Reports? Okay. I wanted to, yes, Ms. Ortego? Go ahead, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I just want to state my support for Dr. Heron's announcement a few minutes ago. I'm glad to hear that our division will comply with the law regarding the lifting of mask mandates for the students in our schools. I'd like to point out that this will remain a personal choice for students and their families. Some will remain masked, some will not, and this is a time for all of us to demonstrate respect for individual choices to our children, and I hope that that will be emphasized by everyone on every side of this argument, that people can make the choice for themselves and they should not be made to feel bad, whatever choice they're making for themselves and their families.
Thank you, Ms. Ortego, and I too want to.[1384.33][1384.33](APPLAUSE). I'll let you do that once. Okay. Well, thank you, guys. All right. Seriously, when we get to public comment, you're going to get some instructions from our vice chair, and I would ask that we refrain from, I feel really loud, but I will ask that we refrain from outbursts and clapping. These are our rules, and though it does sound funny, it is a manner of respect that we extend to one another that don't always share the same viewpoint. So thank you for understanding that as we get into public comment a little bit later, but I also wanted to extend my appreciation to the public, for one. You guys have been engaged with us from the start to this moment while we're sitting here waiting for General Assembly, the House members and the General Assembly to act on an amendment that our governor has provided them, and so I appreciate your encouragement, excuse me, the civility with which you've interacted with the board, with Dr. Heron and her staff, the patience that you've shown all the while. There's been a little bit of frustration on both sides of the equation, and Ms. Ortego is absolutely right. Going forward, we're going to, we still have a test here. How do we show respect and treat one another within the classrooms and on the school buses and on the playground with integrity for the other person's viewpoint on continuing masks or not? I do thank Dr. Heron for her leadership and for her staff in determining that while the governor has said you've gotten through March 1st, and potentially that's what the General Assembly will uphold, a March 1st date, Dr. Heron and her staff found it necessary to lead out in front of that and to support principals and teachers that really are on the front lines of this issue. So thank you, Dr. Heron, for making that necessary and appropriate decision. With that, I want to move on to item 6.1, public comment. I think we have some instructions from Dr. Beers.
It is at this point in our meeting where citizens are invited to address the board. Those citizens diring to speak have submitted speaker cards to the clerk prior to the start of today's, tonight's meeting. These speakers are asked to come to the podium when their names are called, state their names clearly for the record, and direct their comments to the chair of the board. It is the board's interest and desire that all comments be heard and respected. Hence, citizens are asked not to engage in applauding, verbal outbursts, or any other type of demonstrations during the presentations. Personal matters are not considered in public meetings. Therefore, the board requests that all speakers refrain from making reference to specific individuals in any form or fashion. Though the board does not respond to your comments, your comments are heard and appreciated. Each speaker is allocated one minute and thirty seconds to make their presentation, and the board asks that you respect this time limit. Also, please be reminded that no time may be yielded to another speaker. Your acceptance and adherence to these guidelines will be greatly appreciated. Thank you, Mr. Chair, my directions are concluded.
Thank you, Dr. Beers.
And our first speaker is Gaila Baumgart.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Please stop spreading the message that reducing mitigations is dangerous and is going to lead to teachers quitting and us going virtual. One-third of U.S. school districts have been mask optional the entire school year, and guess what? Everything's okay. They are having choir concerts, basketball games with spectators, dances, elementary after-school sports, normal lunchtime with walk and talk, and masks optional, and they are doing just fine with their in-person learning. I reject the repeated statements that the only reason we are able to have in-person learning is because of all of your extreme mitigations. It is a false, baseless claim. Now is the time to not sow more divisiveness. Change your message to now let everyone know that it is safe to off-ramp your extreme implementation of the distancing and mask mitigations and assure the community that it's safe if we don't do all the mitigations to the nth degree. It's not your health team's task to weigh their COVID mitigation recommendations against their impact on learning and mental health. That is your task. It is safe to not have these mitigations, and I know these mitigations are causing my children harmed. I'm concerned that my kids will be segregated and shamed if we opt out of the mask. I would like reassurance that you are not going to segregate the unmasked students and that they will be treated exactly the same. My daughter has dyslexia, my son has a speech IEP, they need to see the mouths of their teachers and specialists. Will you also make masks optional for staff on March 1st? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baumgart.
Our next speaker, our next speaker is Robin Pavlosky.
Good evening, Board. My name is Robin Pavlosky, and I had a whole speech on the masks, and since you made that announcement, I want to say thank you. I want to thank you, for each of you, for all the hard work that you've done. This is a difficult situation. Now I ask you to start thinking about the teachers in the same way. They suffer just as much as the kids, maybe not as much, but they have a lot of difficulty with these masks as well, I'm sure. And just, you know, we need to move on. We need to have our society back, we need to have our school back. We need to be normal again. So that's all I have to say, and I thank you again for all you've done, and I appreciate each one of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pavlosky.
Next speaker is Toby Wiseman.
Good evening, School Board and Superintendent, and I too had comments prepared for removing the mask mandate for students. I am relieved and thrilled to hear that you will be I am relieved and thrilled to hear that you will be allowing it to be optional once the legislation is passed. I still, though, do have concern and care for the teachers who are going to be teaching without the option of not wearing a mask, and we know that there is evidence and science on the side that it is not necessary. There have been many European nations that, early in the pandemic, that did not require mask mandates of the students and their staff. Brown University researchers found no correlations with mask mandates and student and staff case rates, and we do know that there has been a detriment to the students with social and emotional understanding and learning, not being able to, be able to take the facial cues from their teachers when they are masked, and that does have a large impact on their learning, especially as they're young and growing. I would just ask that you would consider making it optional for our teachers as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wiseman.
And our next speaker, speaker is Roel Schon.
Can I take this off? No.
Not yet.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, sir.
I'm not, I'm not political, so, all right. Good evening, school board. I'm here in opposition to masks in general and especially forced mask, masking of children in schools in the future. Parents should have the right to choose whether or not they want to mask their child in the future. The fear from our media has driven people to do many things that make little sense. Nobody has the right to impose a mask on anyone else, nor do they have the right to impose a vaccine on anyone. We should also not discriminate against people for wearing a mask or taking a vaccine. I advise against it, but COVID-19 was always something where the focus should have been on protecting the elderly and ones that have three to four comorbidities and supporting them if they choose to be supported, not under the 18 category that have a 99.996% survival rate from the worst of 2020 COVID strain. These students have more of a chance of dying from a WJCC school bus accident on their school commute than from COVID, especially Omicron. So I'd say that in the future, if we ever get some sort of pandemic or outbreak, we leave it up to the people to make their choices, and if they want to protect themselves, they can. If not, have a good one. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And the next speaker, excuse me, excuse me. Next speaker is Susan Patton.
Hi. I want to give us all a mental picture of what is being allowed by the school board and these school, these masks. I'm so glad that that legislation is there, but we have to remove masks for all human beings. The, I want you to think about this. I want you to, a visual picture in your head of what this thing looks like at the end of the day, okay? These masks hold every bit of filth we come in contact with on a daily basis. We touch them constantly, we move them, we scratch our nose with them, some people sneeze in them, they cough in them, elementary children have runny noses caught by them, we take them on and off numerous times a day, put them in our pockets, put them in our purses, set them on tables, on bathroom sinks, on our phones, we drop them on the floor, then we pick them up and we put them right back on our faces. So not only are you adding germs by the millions to your mask and then breathing through them all day, you are also exhaling the carbon monoxide and harmful germs your body is trying to get rid of into that mask to be breathed right back into your lungs. Please research the video of the fireman testing the oxygen level coming through one of these regular masks. It's scary. Are you thinking about this at all, or are you just following orders, no matter the consequence to your own health, the health of all these children, and the health of everyone who works or comes in contact with the school in any way? Please get rid of these disgusting masks. Act today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patton. Before we have our next speaker, I really do want to ask gently that we do refrain from comments on speakers and applauding, really trying to show deference to the rules and keep this meeting moving along. I, I want to leave it at that for the moment. Mr. Beers, Dr. Beers.
The next speaker is Susan Tisdale.
Dr. Beers, can you tell me how many speakers we have left?
I'm sorry.
How many more speakers we have? Excuse me, Ms. Tisdale, thank you.
We, I believe there are eight.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Susan Tisdale. In March of 2020, my daughter walked out of her high school, not knowing that she would never be allowed back in. She lost the last part of her senior year, no prom, no tennis matches, no senior awards night, no normal graduation, all gone. What's even worse are the kids who graduated a full year later suffered under the similar restrictions their entire senior year. It's now 2022, and we are on the third set of kids who have had to endure the same mindless restrictions. What specific data sets have you been waiting to see in order to allow students and staff to attend school without masks? If you were a teacher instructing your students to perform research for a project, you would demand more from your students than because the CDC told me so. As parents, we demand more from you. Kids are struggling emotionally and educationally. To stand by and ignore this over all else is abhorrent. Thankfully, legislation was passed this week that will hopefully put the decision to wear masks back in the hands of parents and students. What if you learn that more kids in Williamsburg have died from suicide than COVID? What if you learn that your decisions have contributed to this? A school board member recently suggested allocating $100,000 to aid in suicide prevention awareness. Removing all mandates would go a much longer way and helping students' mental health and wouldn't cost taxpayers a dime. Do what you were elected to do, act in the best interest of the students, and release a written statement making masks optional effective immediately. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tisdale.
You know, we can just stop. You're taking up the time of the other speakers by doing. Heather Burke is our next speaker.
Good evening. Do you cover a child's nose and mouth, reduce their field of vision, then tell them to go run? This abuse has been happening all year long. Just last week, a P.E. teacher told a child who was having trouble breathing to pull his mask back up. The board, central office, some principals and teachers have allowed this harm to go on all year, despite common sense and the August health order that said masks are not required for exercise. The order had no caveats, but our administration passed on guidelines to principals that quibbled over the vigor of the exercise and spacing, instead of stating the safety of the child comes first. Parents asked many times for the school to clearly tell all parents and teachers that masks are not required for exercise. The school failed to communicate and implement a policy that prioritizes child safety. In accordance with Virginia Code, we are filing a complaint with the VDOE to revoke the professional licenses of those who put the physical safety of children at risk. Those in charge of schools who can't provide basic safety for those children should no longer be in charge. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burke.
Our next speaker is Whitney Manning.
To the mic.
Oh, sorry. Our next speaker is Whitney Manning.
I am a mother of four children, three of them attend Stonehouse Elementary. I have a fourth grader, a second grader, and a kindergartner who have missed years of their important developmental part of growing up and their rights as children to live and to learn and to play as children are allowed to. My statement to you, it's not a question, my statement to you is you have failed. You have failed my children, you have failed all of these children because you waited till the very end to be told what to do by the law. You could have done something, and my question to you is why? Why did you wait till now? Please, give my children two weeks back from the years that you took from them. My kindergarten cannot understand his teacher, he cannot learn phonics. My fourth grader has missed a month and a half of school without having COVID because of your restrictions and your contact tracing that have been proven to be meaningless. We all got COVID in our house twice from school because masks are ineffective, and you have taken that from my children. You have a choice tonight, you could, you could have done something, you could have changed something, you could have made it about the children, not about politics, not about what the law, you waited till the very end, and I'm just distraught as a parent that this is the example you set, to wait till you're told what to do and not do the right thing when it was so clearly obvious what the right thing was. Make the right choice, make it about the children. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Manning. Dr. Beers.
Anne Marie Smith.
Well, I appreciate Ms. Olwen's announcement, and I, I thank you guys for that. According to executive order two, the admin and the board are empowered right now to remove all masks. E O two is considered a law and has been, has been has evidenced by and supported by emailed information to all of you by citizens. Teachers are also deserving of choice of masks as well, and I encourage you to let the state of Virginia know that you support removing the mask mandates on teachers and staff. I ask how will this affect visitors and a parent's ability to gain access back to schools? I ask the board to revisit Section K of the school policies and rescind the portions that remove the rights of the school board to review and vote on these policies, specifically quote, "The school board authorizes the superintendent to take all necessary actions regarding the safety order and preservation of the educational environment and school board polishing action." So that removes your right with that in there, so please revisit that. It was passed in November of 2020, so I would ask that you guys revisit that section of the policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Next speaker is Alan Parham.
My name is Ellen Parram, president of the Williamsburg James City Education Association, and I want to acknowledge the vital contributions you have all made as elected public officials in WJCC. Although you wear many hats in the workday world, you pull together as a team toward a common goal of helping all students achieve success and working to speak out for public schools and the students and staff you serve. As an educator myself, I appreciate you listening to the voices of our staff. As we work as a team to discuss the budget plan for 2022, 2023, I implore our division leaders to look into increasing the salary percentage from 7% to 10%. Having the full 10% increase in our salary on top of the 5% increase in the healthcare would be beneficial to our employees and to have their salary aligned within the cost of living expenses in WJCC. With our state and nation going through shortage in every corner in the education profession, WJCC needs to step up to not only attract newer teachers but retain those who may look in elsewhere in neighboring divisions. Thank you all for your leadership, and happy school board appreciation month. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parram.
Next speaker is Tanya Whitaker.
I wanted to say thank you for letting us take off the mask. That's good news. I was going to talk about how bad COVID was not, because only 105 people have died in James City counties since the outbreaks. I just want to recapture that fact. It's not that many people, and not, you know, not trying to hurt anybody's feelings, but it's not enough for all of us to suffer with the mask. And then also, I wanted to state that you guys had talked about getting somebody to do data and analysis for $100,000. I would think if I was a teacher, that would hurt my feelings that you guys wouldn't invest more money into us as a teacher and just hire new people. That seems to be a new thing now. I kind of wonder where that is coming from, that we need all these new positions that didn't exist prior. Also, maybe the school should focus on the healthy food and healthy living scenario since COVID is, has a lot to do with having four core morbidities that actually are the reason for somebody to die. Oh, sorry, I'm nervous today. And then also, I wanted to address the issue, the majority of the teachers are wonderful people. They are wonderful, they're doing so, such great work, but then there's a few select that seem to not like their job and are on Facebook discussing or posting about a job fair, and then at the same time complain about their job. I know if I was to complain about my job, they could potentially can me or would consider that. So I'm, I would like for you guys to invest more time into researching what makes a teacher get to where they need to be, to have more help for their job.
Thank you, Ms. Whitaker.
Our next speaker is Hassan Lamont.
Good evening, Hassan Lamont, City of Williamsburg. Although the optional masking will soon be codified into law here in Virginia, it's kind of a shame that it took that long for the school board to then decide that they're going to make masking optional in WJCC schools. You know, we come to these meetings all the time, and we see the community and school transmission tracking and impact data presented, and frankly, in the presenting of that data, it tends to get subliminally conflated with masking effectiveness. The fact is, the science on masking is not settled, nor has a direct correlation been established between the masking of every child in school and that practice's impact on the COVID-19 transmission rates. Now, that's something that tends to get lost in the presentation of those updates. I wish the school board on their own would have adopted a policy that widened the aperture on the science lens regarding mask effectiveness. And I also wish that they had adopted a policy that respected the right of each parent instead of the wants of any group. Now, regardless of the final outcome of the masking bill in the General Assembly, it's a shame that up to this point, the parents had to petition a school for permission to exercise their God-given right, determine and administer the care that they see fit for their own children. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Olwen.
Let's see, our next speaker is John Sl, let's see, Sokovits? Is that right, John?
Sokovits.
Close?
Close. You're not an English teacher.
Say, go ahead and say it, yeah.
Sokovits. Sokovits.
Thank you, Mr. Sokovits.
So I'm also happy to hear that the masks will become a thing of the past, as we, the United States of America, are only one of three countries in the world that force children to wear masks. My concern is that we even need to be having this debate and where this will all lead. You guys have broken the law, but in doing so, JCC school board members, without knowing it, have outperformed Yale University students. See, in 1961, Yale professor Stanley Milgram performed a social experiment on students in which test subjects would administer electric shock to another individual based on a person in authority telling them to do so. These shocks would increase in voltage till lethal dose was administered. Of these test students, of these test subjects, Milgram found that 65% of them would cause significant bodily harm to another simply because they were told to do so by someone in authority. And in a four to two vote last month, JCC school board members scored a 66, with members voting to continue to abuse our children. And that's what it is, abuse. Now, I know many of you probably don't, are not a student of history as I am in college, and I assure you that on my way to this degree, I found in this field, I have read countless accounts when someone did heinous deeds because someone told them to. I could simply read from the Nuremberg Trials to you, but you won't give me an I could simply read from the Nuremberg Trials to you, but you won't give me enough time. Time after time, individuals have washed their hands of crimes placing blame on their superiors to escape punishment. Well, here we are. Through the superior authority now needs to take blame.
Thank you, Mr. Slocovitz. If you have more, if you don't mind leaving it with the clerk. Thank you, sir. Dr. Beers.
And our last speaker is Phyllis Eastern, Easterns?
Good evening, and thank you for being willing to serve on the school board and make difficult decisions. I'm thankful for this decision. It's a decision that many of us have known for a very long time needed to be made. And one of my concerns when I talk to people, I talk to a lot of people in a grocery store line or anywhere, and I ask them detailed questions about what's going on in the United States and, and what they know. And what I find is a lot of them don't know a lot. And I believe that part of that is because some of us only listen to that ideology that we want to hear, and therefore, we don't listen to anything that is not in our bailiwick. And so some of you, if you would expand your amazing ability to, to gather facts, I think you would be in a better position to make the right decisions many times. I think we, some people just have narrowed what they will listen to. And so for a very long time, we've known that masks don't work despite the CDC and all the bureaucrats in DC. I am concerned about the impact of masks on our children. So I'd ask that you all think about how you can help the 25% of children that are depressed, that are anxious, that are isolated, that are looking at suicide. You know, there are lots of things that need to be addressed. Thank you.
Please leave the rest of your remarks with the clerk. I would like to look, look at them, and I think my colleagues would too. I don't want to speak for anybody, but... Dr. Beers?
Our last speaker.
Okay. All right. Thank you to our, our speakers this evening, and we will move on to item seven, Consent Agenda. Do some reading here. On our consent agenda, we have item 7.01, Approval of Financial Report and Monthly Bills and Payroll for January 2022. Item 7.02, Approval of Minutes from January 18th, 2022 Budget Work Session. 7.03, Approval of Minutes from January 18th, 2022 Meeting. Item 7.04, Approval of Minutes from January 20th, 2022 Meeting. Item 7.05, Approval of Minutes from February 1st, 2022 Meeting. Item 7.06, Resolution R 522 National School Social Work Week. Item 7.07, Resolution R 622 National Foreign Language Week. Item 7.08, Resolution R 722 Disability Awareness Month. Item 7.09, Resolution R 822 Equity and Education Month. And item 7.10, Revised Policy A.D. Educational Philosophy. May I have a motion on the consent agenda, please?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Ordigo. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Young and Ms. Aller.
Mrs. Ordigo. Aye. Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye, thank you. Item nine, in fact, 9.01, Presentation by Mosley Architects of the WJCC School Administration Facilities Master Plan. Dr. Heron. Oh, did I skip something? Oh, I did. I skipped a whole section. Thank you. Apologies. I got excited for a second. I really did.
Mr. Dowell, I think the architects did as well.
I really did.
They thought they were going to get up.
I apologize, sir. Get you a water. Action items, okay. Yeah, we've got some work. Item 8.01, Approval of the Personnel Actions. If I can have a motion, please.
I move that we approve Personnel Actions as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Is there a second?
Second.
I'm going to give that to Ms. Hunley. Thank you, Ms. Hunley. And on Personnel Actions, if I can have a roll call, Ms. Aller.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye. All right. Item 8.02, Approval of the 2022-23 School Calendar. If I may have a motion on that item.
Mr. Chair, I move the approval of the 2022-23 School Calendar as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Hunley. And is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Young. I'm looking at Dr. Heron. Do you have comments there?
Mr. Dowell, we do have some information for you tonight before you move forward to approve the calendar for next year. Mr. Keever's bringing some of the feedback from the community following putting it out after our last meeting. Mr. Keever, I'm going to hand it over to you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Good evening, members of the school board. This evening, wanted to share with you some specific information relative to the feedback that we received from the community after our last conversation around a couple of the versions of the draft calendar. Before I dive into the feedback, I did want to take a moment just to remind the board and the viewing public as well of a couple of the key features of the calendar planning process. One of those pieces is that we develop and present and are presenting in both of the draft calendars this evening, 180-day instructional days as a part of the calendar. Additionally, as a, as a recall for the board and the community, when we, when we first asked for some feedback on putting the calendar together for 2223, the board advised that there was a desire to maintain and at least look at in more detail the pre-Labor Day start. That was also a scenario that the Calendar Committee was interested in continuing to explore. We learned from the Calendar Committee as well as from conversation with the board that two full weeks at the winter holiday was desirable, and then we were challenged also to look at some strategic scheduling opportunities for staff to be able to collaborate, learn, and plan together during the course of the school year. To the feedback specifically, had nearly 1,700 respondents to the feedback, which is a, which is a strong number. Just wanted to give you a quick rundown of what some of those items were. Prior to doing that, I wanted to let you know that 65% of the respondents indicated that they were parents or guardians. 22% of the respondents indicated that they were staff members. Of that staff member total, the largest grouping were elementary staff members. 5% of the respondents indicated that they were both parents, guardians, and staff members. And then 5% of our respondents were students in our schools with an overwhelming majority of those students indicating that they were high school students. The, the, the feedback that we received was in essence evenly split across the calendar variations. When I say that, I would note that 45% of the respondents felt as though the calendar that began on 8/29 was their preferred calendar. There were about 50% of the folks that felt like the 24th of August would be their preferred starting date, and then that leaves 5% of the respondents who, though it was not an option, felt like we ought to return back to the post-Labor Day calendar. So from our perspective, it was evenly split between an early start and a late start. There were, again, like last year, questions and concerns brought forward about vacations that are occurring in August and planned for August. Specifically, there are some families that noted that their vacations were altered last year. They made the subsequent changes for this year and felt as though an 8/24 start would again impinge upon that. There is great concern within our community around early release days and the idea that those early release days are challenging for families to navigate, and sometimes the benefit of those early release days are lost amongst school staff members just based on some of the shuffle in and out of school and returning students home. There was support across the feedback for teacher collaboration, learning, and planning. Again, we noted from the feedback that the two full weeks of the winter holiday were supported. Many of the teachers who offered feedback were and voiced concern about their earlier return date. If we started school on the 24th of August, there would be an expectation for teachers to return in advance of that, of course, and there was some concern about how early that would be. And then another theme that emerged was this idea that we would conjoin our calendar to the greatest extent possible with other local calendars in terms of the school year. It's a result of that feedback and looking carefully across the, the two options that administration would recommend to the board, that we adopt a calendar that begins on the 29th of August and concludes on June 15th. These are the key dates during that school year, the 23rd through the 25th for the Thanksgiving holiday in November, the two full weeks at winter break, the 19th through the 30th. I do also want to note that we are advising and recommending that January 2nd be an additional day at the winter holiday, which would actually prolong that break. Spring break would be the 3rd through the 7th of April, and then Thursday, June 15th would be the last day of school. One final piece of information that I wanted to share as you were making a determination in terms of the recommendation involved the number of teacher collaboration, learning, and planning days. In the 8/29 version, we are able to designate six specific days during the academic year for that to occur with teachers. And then I also wanted to give you a quick snapshot of the early release days across K-12. There would be four early release days. In essence, those are, and come at the end of marking periods, the, for, into the first marking period, into the third marking period, and into the fourth marking period. Two early release days specifically at the elementary level to give some time, and we recognize that two early release days is not enough to get all accomplished, all parent conferences accomplished, but wanted to, to provide some time for that. And then two specific high school early release days for final exams in June. I'll pause there and answer any questions before you render a decision.
Ms. Young?
Aye. Mr. Keever, I appreciate the efforts that have been made, especially regarding the maintaining the two weeks off for our teachers over the winter holiday. I, I do have a question. Was there a discussion about, I'm an elementary school teacher, by the way. Having two full days for conferences for elementary school? I mean, they're doing all of this after early release, and then I assume, and that could be a big problem, but after other school days, having parents come in for conferences? Is that correct?
If I understood your question correctly, did, did we consider two full non-instructional days at the elementary level for conferences?
That's exactly what I'm asking.
Actually, Ms. Young, because of the need to schedule 180 instructional days and, and fitting those days in, we did not look at two full days of non-instruction. I will say that the, that part of what we are learning is that some conferences are best in person. Some conferences can take place through a virtual medium, as we did two years ago. Found some benefit there. And then there was also some discussion around the potentiality of using that election day, which is November 8th. It's a, it's a day that's a non-instructional day, which would be a planning, collaboration, and learning day for teachers as another option potentially for parent conferences. So we did not talk specifically about two non-instructional days for conferencing.
I will be bringing it up again next year. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Ms. Hummel, thank you.
Between the two different options, when you were doing the survey, did you suss out the, the teachers and what their preference was generally between the two different options? And if you could share that information?
Yes, ma'am. Teacher preference generally coalesced behind the 29th of August for, for several different reasons. One of the reasons that was brought forward was the idea of six designated days during the course of the year for planning, collaboration, and learning. Another is related to the, the teacher contractual obligations and when the teacher would need to return back to work and the desire for that not to be too early in August. So that, those were part of the reasons the teachers got behind the idea of the 29th in the, in the feedback comments.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Hunley?
No.
Okay, I'm sorry. Just saw you nodding your head there in agreement. So I think what the recommendation looks to be is one week prior to Labor Day and then an extra week at the end that provides a little bit more time around the holiday for two full weeks and then some additional days for planning. Is that essentially what we're looking at, sir?
I'm not sure if I would fully agree that it's an extra week in June. I, I think that if you were looking at our calendar this year versus last year, it is, it is a longer timeframe simply because we've tried to plan days in and, and looking at those two full weeks at the winter break, plus the idea that January 2nd is going to be the federal holiday to celebrate New Year's, it, it doesn't give you a lot of room in order to be able to end too much earlier.
Okay. Question for you. So I, I saw there was a little bit of catching up from some community members as far as us having already done a pre-Labor Day start this year. Are we seeing some of our regional divisions or divisions within our region beginning to do the same? Are they beginning to follow suit with that?
Yes, sir. But believe that York is utilizing a pre-Labor Day start. I also understand that Newport News is moving in that direction as well as some other, other nearby divisions. I will say that if Newport News goes ahead and adopts their calendar pre-Labor Day, that would then, again, realign our calendar with the New Horizons calendar because New Horizons follows the Newport News calendar.
Thank you, sir. I don't want to miss Ms. Book. If you're there and have any questions, I can't see you, but...
I don't have any questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. All right.
No, I'm fine.
I think you said...
No.
Okay. If there's nothing else, I think we're ready for a roll call on the question.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye. Thank you, and thank you for all the hard work and the collaboration with all of your stakeholders on this question. Bring us a calendar that we can, we can support. Thank you so much. Look at item 8.03, Approval of the Award of Contract for Invitation for Bid Number 2022715 Berkeley Middle School HVAC Replacement and Roof Repairs. No additional information here. Dr. Heron?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. And so essentially, the HVAC at Berkeley came to its end of its useful life, and we are looking at a... Do we have the cost embedded here in the motion?
Yes.
We do.
Yep. Four. 4.269.
If you see, okay, thank you. Yeah, okay. So roof repairs to Vertex Co. Corporation in the amount of 4.269 million. Okay. Any questions for staff or any discussion on this? Okay. I think we need to take a motion first. Is there a motion for this item?
Yes, sir, Chair. I, I move that the, that, I recommend that the board award the contract for IFB number 202-2715 to Vertex Co. Corporation in the amount of $4,269,000.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hunley. And Ms. Aller?
Dr. Beers.
Oh, aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye, thank you. And if I can have a motion to approve the Award of Contract for Invitation for Bid Number 2022656 James River Elementary School Partial Floor Replacement. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the Award of Contract for Invitation for Bid Number 202-2656 James River Elementary School Partial Floor Replacement to Continental Flooring Company in the amount of $317,668.
Thank you, Ms. Ordigo. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Any discussion or further questions on this item? All right. Another one of those that we had anticipated needing to take in care of at James River, and I believe we're going to be taking care of this for a good while to come. I think they said 25 years. We'll hope to stretch it that long. All right. If there are no questions or comments, Ms. Cook, you're good?
Yes, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Aller, if you don't mind?
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye, thank you. And 8.05, Approval of Purchase Request for Playground Upgrades at Clarebird Baker, Laurel Lane, and Norwich Elementary Schools. Is there a motion for this item?
I move to approve the purchase request for the playground upgrades...
I move to approve the purchase request for the playground upgrades for Clairebird Baker, Laurel Lane and Norwich Elementary School for site concepts for a hundred and forty one thousand nine hundred and ninety nine dollars.
Thank you, Ms. Hundley, and thank you for the second, Dr. Beers. Any questions or comments here? Hearing none. I think that we're going to get a lot of cheers happy comments from our elementary school kids once they're installed. All right, Ms. Aller.
Mrs. Hundley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye. And approval of the award of contract for request for proposal number two zero two 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 yep, one, academic and career planning resource system. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the award of contract for request for proposal two zero two 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 two, one, academic and career planning resource system to School Links Incorporated for a total cost of seventy five thousand three hundred and forty two dollars for the first two years of the contract.
Thank you. Ms. Young, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hundley. For the board for any comments or concerns, okay. Again, this was one of those items that have been brought to our attention prior to the pandemic and because of the great need to to reserve cash for what we didn't know was going to happen. This got put on the back shelf, so happy to bring this one back and see it put to good use. And Ms. Aller?
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hundley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye. And item eight point zero seven, approval of amendment to the fiscal year twenty twenty two grants fund budget. Just basically balancing out our budget sheet to account for monies now provided to us. So can I have a motion on this item eight point zero seven?
I move, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Ms. Hundley?
I move the approval of the amendment to the fiscal year twenty twenty grants fund budget.
Thank you, Ms. Hundley. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Ordigo. Before we do that, did you give us the amount, the dollar figure?
Sorry.
You have that.
Twenty three million.
Yeah.
Twenty three million one hundred and ten thousand nine hundred and eighty four dollars.
Thank you, and can I have a second on that?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Ordigo. Any other discussion? All right, Ms. Aller.
Mrs. Hundley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo. Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
I heard an aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye, thank you. All right, now Mosley Architects presentation, thank you for bearing with us. Nine point zero one, Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I believe Mr. Snipes is going to introduce this item this evening and then introduce our guests as well. Thank you.
Good evening, School Board Chair, School Board Members and Dr. Heron. Tonight's agenda item supports goal four of the strategic plan. If you recall in June of twenty twenty one, representatives from Mosley Architects proposed options for school administration in the school operations building for the next twenty years. Sean Gordon, Chief Central, Chief Civil Engineer for James City County and representatives from Mosley Architects are present tonight to provide an update on the final draft of the WJCC School Administration's and Master Facilities Plan. Sean?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Board Members, Dr. Heron. We're here this evening to provide the update to the facilities master plan that we are now at a hundred percent. With me is Billy Riggs, Principal and Vice President with Mosley Architects, and Andrew McVay, Project Manager with Mosley Architects. I thought I would share a little bit of background information before we start with the presentation. The county selected Mosley Architects through our annual services under the Architectural Selection Division process that we had. We chose them because of the extensive experience they had with local governments and public schools and the Commonwealth. The space needs assessment was the first step in this process. It was identified by the Board of Supervisors in the twenty thirty five strategic plan. The space needs assessment was completed August the seventeenth, twenty twenty. The facilities master plan is the next step, was the next step in the process to determine the best option to incorporate those spaces that were identified in the strategic plan into future facility accommodations. The facilities master plan provides a roadmap to meet the county's space needs for twenty years, for the next twenty years of the most critical facilities. Included in the facilities master plan were also the county administration facilities and the Williamsburg James City County Court functions. Now at the hundred percent stage, you will note in this plan that there were two options that were selected for the school administration and the operations and maintenance facilities. The preferred choice identified as the master plan and the alternate concept. Cost assessments were developed for the master plan option and projected out to the year twenty forty. With that, I will turn it over to Billy Riggs to provide the update with a PowerPoint presentation.
Sean, thank you very much. Chairman Dowell, School Board, Dr. Heron, thank you very much for letting us be here and share our findings with you this evening. It's my pleasure to present the administration and operating operations and maintenance facility master plan update. I'm going to try to advance our slides here. That doesn't appear to be working. Somebody move it forward? All right, now, okay, so what we did, we started the project with a space needs assessment, and that's basically going through and getting an understanding of the spaces that you currently have in your school administration building and your administration annex as well as your operations and maintenance buildings. We're going to go through your office spaces, the size of those spaces, and determine what pieces were missing. In other words, what would make them ideal? So we did that evaluation first. If we can go to the next slide. So what we did is we went through the the different departments that make up your administration building, and we did them with, did those with interviews. We figured out how many people were in each of those spaces, how big each of those spaces are, and what they need to be over the next time period. I'm not going to go through and read you the list of all the different departments that you have, but we also did that for your shared spaces as well. So if we go through to the next slide, really, our goal here was to develop an affordable, implementable facilities plan to meet your public schools' administration, operations and maintenance's twenty year needs, so out to the year twenty forty. We identified it in the space approval needs that was done back in twenty twenty through the development of alternative conceptual designs for each site or campus. So we can go to the next slide, please. So what you see here, this is a chart that basically we used to go through and develop those space needs. So we listed out, first, the administration building is the grouping that you see at the top of the page, and listed all of the different departments that you currently have. And if you were to look at those departments, what we did is we looked at what you currently had in those departments and how much square footage was used in each department. That was your current need. Then what we did is we projected out what you would need for five years, ten years, and twenty years out to twenty forty. So if you look at the very small, say for an example, if you look at finance, you can see that you currently have nine people in that position, and they occupy a certain amount of square footage. We were also able to project out how many people would you you would need when you got to the year twenty forty and how much square footage that would take. And that square footage is in net square feet. So effectively, if you had an office space that measured ten feet by ten feet, that would be a hundred square feet. But it takes more than net square footage. You need gross square footage. You need to enclose it with walls. You need corridors to get you to that office. You need toilets and stairs and elevators. So there's a multiplication factor that you add on, so it probably takes you a hundred and thirty three square feet to get a hundred square foot office. So that's actually the gross plan. So if you were to go in and look at the forty year column and add up all that square footage, you will get your, the net square footage that you would need. Then you do that with the multiplier, and if you take that up to the top line, you're seeing that you're coming up with a total of just under sixty thousand gross square feet necessary for that building. Then if we go down to the bottom line, we did a similar exercise. We went and looked at the operations and maintenance facility, and we saw how many people were currently in that space and what square footage they were currently using. Then we projected it again all the way out to the twenty forty need, and you can see that that's a little over a net gain of about forty thousand square feet. So all total to handle the administrative needs and the operation and maintenance, we're kind of at a hundred and two thousand square feet of gross square footage to accommodate those facilities. So if you can go to the next slide. So again, effectively, we've got just under sixty thousand square feet of master plan facility to be located within the proposed government campus at War Hill Tract Opportunity Way. Now, the benefits of locating the building within the JCC government campus include shared parking for large events, such as your school board meetings, as well as the proximity that gives you to the other government departments. The other piece that we want to look at is an alternative concept, and that would be to create a standalone building built on a centrally located greenfield site in James City County. That location would be to be determined later. One of the key things there is that land acquisition costs are not included in the preliminary budget estimate and that additional funds would be required for that piece of property on that project. Effectively, both options carry the same cost for the building and site development. It's just a matter in in the alternative concept, would you have to procure a site on top of the other number? So if we go to the next slide, the other thing to keep in mind is that it is going to require lots of staff parking. You're projected out to have two hundred and fifty six employees in the year twenty forty, and that you would also want to have some visitor parking space. There may be some economy if you're adjacent to another facility that has a different use time so that you could share that parking spot. So it's something to keep in mind when you try to make these decisions. Next slide, please. So here you see the master plan for the War Hill Opportunity Way Tract, and you can see again the price tag for the building would be the twenty nine point seven million dollars. You're starting at the top with the law enforcement portion, and as you move down into the site, the angle building that you see would be the three story administrative building. And then the square that you see below that would be the school board administrative building. Effectively, that square that you see represents thirty thousand square feet, so your building would be two stories. It would accommodate about that much space. And then across the bottom of the page, you're seeing the new fire station, fire training facility and and fire warehouse. But the nice thing about this arrangement is it does take all the parking lots and push them together to give you that shared use opportunity. Okay, let me go to the next slide. So the other thing that we wanted to consider is suppose we did not do it there. What would the qualities that the alternative site might need and some of those characteristics to consider? A centrally, a central location to provide access to Williamsburg and James City County parents and students. Centrally located for the staff from the schools to access central office functions. Centrally located for central office administrators to travel out to the schools on a regular basis as they provide those services. And also, central location increases the efficiency and saves considerable travel time and mileage for the staff. It could be co-located with a compatible function of James City County to share visitor parking for larger events such as staff training and for school board meetings. So you go to the next slide. So here, what we've done here is a drawing of an idealized alternative site, and effectively what we are showing there is a thirty thousand square foot building footprint. The building would be two stories. We've wrapped it with two hundred and fifty some parking spaces. We've included stormwater management. We've applied some setback requirements. And effectively, it looks like at a minimum, it would take six acres to make that property occur to to work in two stories. Now, keep in mind that that is if you can find a level site, and if you can find a site that doesn't have any stormwater management issues running through it or wetlands. So that gives you an idea of kind of the scope of what that building would be. If we could go to the next slide, just to give you an idea about what a building like that could look like, we took your basic programs and began to lay it out. We started to look at the relationships between those, and we laid out a first and second floor plan. You can see that we were able to basically take six of your programs and incorporate them on a first floor and kind of engray there towards the middle are the shared spaces that all of the different departments would use. But we, it it comes up with a very efficient arrangement. It's got a double loaded corridor, a centralized elevator and stair, as well as stairs out at either end. So it's a very efficient layout, and if we go to the second floor plan, you can again see that double loaded corridor that puts four of your different departments upstairs with stairs at either end and a centralized stair and elevator core in the middle. Lots of night, nice natural light would be provided to all of these spaces. So so we feel like it is certainly an option that would work really well. If you can go to the next. What I'd like to do is spend a second now and and talk a little bit about the operations piece of the master plan. So this is looking at your other site and looking at about fourteen point two million dollars i- is part of this master plan. And what we want to do is if you look to the right of the page, you can see that gross square footage that was necessary, the forty some thousand square feet that you would need for your entire operations plan. Then if you think about the square footage that you currently have at that facility, you've got about twenty seven thousand square feet. So then you've got a delta of about sixteen thousand square feet. Four thousand of it would want to be in the maintenance facility, so that leaves you at a deficit of about twelve thousand gross square feet of an addition that would be necessary at that facility. So the other thing that we want to do and talk about there is that there's an existing fuel island that is very close to the building. We feel like that it would probably be best to to relocate that, number one, to get it away from the building, and number two, to open up the site to make it more streamlined as the buses move around the facility. The other thing that we need to think about, too, is that there's some underground fuel tanks there. There's would definitely need to be some testing to take place before we do any moving there. That testing has not been done yet. And then the lastly, last thing, again, we talked a little bit about that four thousand square feet of storage building that would be an entirely separate piece. So if we go to the next slide, I'm going to share with you two options that kind of, they both represent about fourteen point two million dollars to the master plan. You see the main access road along the right hand side of the image. And what we propose there, currently, there's only one entrance into the site. Just above the current entrance, we proposed a second entrance to the site, again, to create better vehicular circulation through the site. You see in white the existing building, the twenty six thousand square foot building, where we have proposed in blue behind it, the twelve thousand square foot single story addition. Just above that addition, you see the old location for the fuel pumps, and we've taken that and rotated to a new location so that we can get better access all the way around the building. And then all the way to the left hand side of the diagram, which you're seeing, is that little storage building that would be associated with the project. So now if you go to the next slide, again, the options are very similar. The key difference here is that instead of putting the addition, the new twelve thousand square feet to the rear of the building, we would take it and pull it down to the side. There would still be circula- vehicular circulation that would go down below that building and out. But both options represent the same cost, just two different ways to look at the a solution. If we go to the next slide, you can, what you can see here, and I apologize that it's it's rotated a little bit, but you can see the overall extent and the amount of property there as it's compared to the amount of property that you're using. You know, we wouldn't be going outside of the current property usage, but we just wanted you to see kind of how much property was there and then how little of it is actually used for the building. So if we can go to the next slide. We also wanted to share with you just kind of our evaluation. We went through the existing facility. Effectively, fifty five percent of or so is that support space where the buses come into the building. It's a high volume, two story space. Then everything to the right of that are the sport and office spaces associated with it. So if you can go to the next slide, you'll see, again, everything to the left is the big support space where the buses with the mezzanine that opens above it. But you can see that about between twenty five and thirty percent of the plan is offices that exist on that second floor with some restrooms and stair towers. All right, so I've gone through that fairly quickly. Hopefully, that gives you an idea about what some of the solutions might be, and hopefully we'd be able to address any questions that you might have.
Thank you so much, Mr. Riggs. A lot of information there, a lot of information, but very detailed, and I appreciate it. I want to ask before I offer an opportunity for questions from the board, process wise, this was final. Process wise, this was final draft. Dr. Heron and Mosley, are you looking for another evening where you present your recommendation to the board? Dr. Heron, what does this look like?
I believe, I hope there's an opportunity that this would be our opportunity to provide input on the two options presented. Is that the purpose of this evening?
It was to to give you the update to the facility's master plan at a hundred percent. We, you know, worked through first at the draft phase and then the seventy five percent. And and we're bringing the hundred percent to today.
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. So we originally came to the board with the draft, original concept to kick off the meeting to get input. And then we came back with the seventy five percent. It was twenty five, seventy five percent and and we're with the at the hundred percent phase to kind of present the findings of what we have, solidify.
Okay, so you're looking for some guidance from the board this evening is what I'm hearing?
I think it might be helpful to have some responses to that. And we're seeing much of it for in the first time as well. I think the the buildings are the same regardless of where they are, the main administration building. But one is out on the War Hill Track and the other option is much more central. We don't have any reason to be located with county buildings because we have absolutely, we have very, very little interaction on a daily basis. So that's not a high priority, certainly from administrative perspective. The other reasons for the alternate option located with the school or something else with parking. Much more centrally located from an administrative perspective would be much preferable.
So I ask that because I'd like to help form board questions as we understand maybe the moment that we're in, the space that we're occupying right now. So board members, are there any questions or comments? Anything that needs clarifying while we have Mr. Riggs with us? Yes, Michelle?
Right, hi. Thank you for the report. I did, I did have a question about, you're saying that the property that currently that sits on, there's a lot of unutilized space. Is that, is it, did I hear that correctly?
Yes, ma'am. In other words, effectively, and you can actually see in the diagram there that where the building sits and the parking for the buses and the maintenance building that would go in, the storage building that would go in the back. Effectively, what's still, there's about fifty percent more of that site that is treed. And so you own that land, it's just much, much of it is not used.
Right, I guess that's my question because I'm looking on the map. Is there, do one of these maps show the boundaries of the property that we own?
Yes, if you go to the net west, there you go. So do you see the gold line that's kind of wrapping? There's the property line.
Just a second. The gold line, I see it.
Yes.
So that that gold line shows the property boundaries.
That's correct, yes.
Wow.
One, one item to note, the, the property to the left portion of that site that's has been developed. Has a lot of relief topography to it. So there's a lot of ravines there. It's not like a, a flat surface field. So to, to do any development there would, it would take a lot of, of work and money to.
I've driven by there, there's lots of gullies and.
Yes, ma'am.
Right, the property is not flat as you said. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Ortega?
Yeah, so just making sure that I'm understanding what I'm looking at. We're, we're talking about two separate sites, no matter what.
Yes, ma'am.
And one is the ops and that's just kind of adding to what is there. And the other would be the, the school admin building that would be built from scratch.
Correct.
Either way.
Yes, in, in other words, both of them. So you'd have one that is on a site that is to be determined later and then one that could go at that other site. Effectively, you would be building the, in theory, the same building and have all the same components. The shape of it may change because of the nature of the different sites that you do. But what we are trying to point out is that, you know, one is in a piece of property that the, that the county currently has. And one is that it could be a piece of property that the county has elsewhere. So those are kind of your two options.
So is the county already planning on building all these other buildings? This is a, that like the fire training and the fire station and the county, county admin building, is that already being, that's going to happen?
At this point, it's considered this like a conceptual plan. They haven't been put in, in the five year C I P budget. So it's a conceptual, it's a starting point to work towards future facilities to meet the twenty year need.
Because the, the shared parking was part of the kind of advantage to this. So I just wondered if, if it's not certain that there would be other facilities there then.
The county is looking at, at facilities at War Hill as, as an option, yes.
Would the division have to purchase the land that, that, that the admin building would sit on from the county or would this be?
It, it's count, the War Hill property is county owned land.
We don't have to pay for that land?
No, I don't believe so.
If I can piggyback on Ms. Ortega's question, what about the alternate location? Is there an estimate on cost to build on an alternate location?
I think it would all depend on if the alternate site was a site that was chosen that was land that was already owned by the county. Or if it was determined that a more centralized location needed to be found. And if it was not owned, then it would, it would need to be purchased. So it would all depend on location and size of the parcel would, would help, you know, dictate what the price would be for, for purchase.
Yeah, I'm just, so and both of these, aside from land acquisition, it both are estimated to cost about twenty nine point seven million either way. Is, I'm just confused because when we were talking about adding wings onto school buildings, we came up, we got up to thirty three million for two wings. How, how is this less than that?
So the, the method we wanted to predict costs, we use a cost consultant, they're professional construction cost estimators. They're called Downing and Scott. So they gave us a cost per square foot estimate, say, I think it's something like two hundred and fifty dollars per square foot. And the reason the buildings cost the same is because they're both going to be new. And they're both going to be the same size because your space need for twenty forty is the same. So given that, since we are not including the site purchase cost, it's the same size. And we take that size and multiply it by the square foot cost. So that's why they're the same.
Okay, Ms. Somal?
Okay, so I guess I'm not quite sure. So we're, we're supposed to be making a decision on two conceptual ideas. For what reason do we need to make a decision? I guess my, my question is like, just to give everyone, like, I, I guess I'm confused about what our purpose is.
I, I think tonight is just a presentation of information, but sometimes the information then becomes a reality. And, and so it would be good to get some perceptions from the board as to the best location for a central office from a functional perspective. Potentially, that then might go into the later thinking as they take the next step forward. I think if we say nothing tonight, then we, we don't mind where it goes. Whereas I think there is a, there's, there's an advantage to a much more central location for our functionality and access for parents and access for teachers. Across the whole system. So that, that's my comment on it. We don't have to make comments, there's no decision to make tonight that I'm aware of.
I mean, I guess my, my opinion for that, for both concepts is if the cost is the same, which I, I'm having a hard time imagining the cost would be the same. If the War Hill Track is owned by the county and we need to purchase land. I can't imagine that the cost would be the same.
The building cost would be the same. You, you, you've hit exactly on it. In other words, it depends on if you can get another piece of property in a different location given to you by the county. Or if in fact you would have to purchase it. That's where you get the delta.
Okay.
That makes sense?
Yes, so given that we could potentially get another piece of land from the county. It would be my preference in this large, skinny, narrow county city situation that we have. That we do try to be cognizant of, of a central location. Because the people on either end of the county, it's a long way for people to go. You know, from, from the Grove area to out, you know, to the Tuano area, the War Hill Track. That's a, it's a hike, but that's just my opinion.
Ms. Young?
I just had another question. I'm looking at the map where it shows the, the buildings in blue, the one with the fire training area and everything. Is, and I noticed there's a building already currently in existence there. Is that the police station that's there?
That's the law enforcement facility, yes.
That's where we had that meeting.
Right, right, okay. So I'm just, I'm just trying to just see which side of the road it's on.
The high school is just across the street.
Right.
Represents the administrative building.
Okay, that's, that's what I thought, thank you very much.
And if, if I could clarify, we're not making decisions about the future building this evening. This is a, a big overview about what the goals for the county are as far as a master plan and a, and a guide moving forward. You're gonna, i- if this is approved, the school board is going to take this and use it to help them make decisions. And connect up schedule with budgets in the future and say, all right, we think the school board building is the priority. And it's going to cost this amount of money, so we're going to plant that in ten years. And eight years from now, a little bit before that, then you're going to start the project for real. And you're going to get an architecture staff on board and start making dishes, decisions about what it's going to look like, how big is it, what is the shape, et cetera. This is, this is just an overview, a, a general plan.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Beers?
No, I get that, and it is a general plan and, 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 and there's more to come. So I, I, I under, yeah, I, I, I'm still having. It's still a challenge in terms of land space. Yeah, finding out where, where, where it is, where, where the land is that is centrally located. Because as Ms. Somal said, it's a very, we have a very long, it's a very long county and city together when you put them all together. It's, it's, yeah, so I think that, I'm, I've always thought that's probably the most important thing right now is get a site. So you can, you know, so you can really start to, I know, I understand about the models and seeing how it works. It's really, and it's very important because it, not just the square footage, but how many acres do we need, all of that, I think. But it's also contingent on what kind of land do we have available and. So, yeah, they have to really go in tandem, I think, in order to do that.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. So I think the, the sentiment of the board at the moment is centrally located. That's the theme it seems to be, and I would agree with that. I would also like to, from my part, see that we keep our options open. I wouldn't want to box ourselves out of prime real estate that might be available to us. That suits the needs of our school division, our parents that need to get to central, central office for any sort of meetings, our staff. So I'd like to keep our options open and see what land is available, but also recognizing that. You know, we don't have taxing authority, so we're reliant on funding partners and, and just recognizing that as well. That if, you know, that dollar figure attached to location is exorbitant. You know, we, we might need to bite the bullet and, and go a different direction. But I, for me personally, I wouldn't want to box ourselves in. I want to, I would want to keep our options open. Two questions though. The ops location, and you answered my questions that I was going to ask remembering when you guys were with us a while before. Storage space and fuel cells, still working on the fuel cells. What about locations for electric buses as we trend that direction? Was that a part of your estimation?
It certainly can be. You know, this is such a, a forward thinking plan that absolutely we would have to make accommodations for that. You know, as your system changes and switches over, we would have to make accommodations, but you've got the space for it. So I don't think there'd be any problem with that.
Okay, and you, you might have touched on this. I apologize, there was a lot of information without at central office meeting space for the board. Right now, we're in a gym and we can seat quite a few public members. What does that look like?
There were programmed into the shared spaces, a very large flexible meeting room that was subdividable. So yes, that, those have been accommodated in the program for whichever location you pick for that to be in your building.
It would be a shared space then?
It's shared amongst the departments for the school board. It would all be school's property.
Sure, sure.
That makes sense.
If I could add to that, Mr. Dowd, the, the thinking when we were in the planning stages of this was a multi-functional room that would be used for professional development for staff. But also could turn into the board meeting room as well.
If we could go to the floor plan, if you could go forward, there you go. You, you see right in the, in gray, kind of right at the front door, there is a subdivitable large space that could be used that way. So there's definitely one in the program. Doesn't mean it needs to be ultimately this way, but it seemed like it fit. It would be usable by the staff every day and easy for the public to get to.
Any idea at this stage what it would seat for our public?
I, I don't want to throw out a number and throw out a wrong number.
I don't want to put you on the spot, but thank you.
And if I could address one thing you said about the fuel island. So I just want to clarify that testing of the existing underground and fuel tanks is beyond the purview of this report. Because that would be, that would involve doing a survey and getting underground technicians out to the site. And we don't even know when this is going to occur. And even if we did the testing now, it could start leaking in five years. And if you don't start the project for another ten years, you know, it, it wouldn't be a valuable expense. So thi- this is really just the, to get an idea about scope of what, what we're trying to do. And identify some critical items that would need to be considered in the future as the project moves towards its next stage. Which would not be this, this master plan, it would be the individual project at the school ops site.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Heron?
Dr. Beers and then Ms. Ortega?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to ask, what would happen to the, the facility that's next door that we use now for central office?
When the middle school, the rest of the middle school is built, their plan was always to demolish the older buildings. And at that point, we would need a new central office. And that would only happen when the enrollment of the middle school needed more space.
Dr. Beers?
Yeah, has there been any thought about considering additional space? So that we could have our, our school board meetings at the central office? Rather than going, you know, going back and forth between the county's, county's location and the city's location. Why not have our own, uh, uh, space?
So that, that is the space that we talked about in the front. It doesn't mean that when we get into the real project and we actually program the facility, we could add more square footage to that. And we've certainly done facilities that have full blown meeting rooms. We, we went through the same process in Prince William, we designed the Ed Kelly Leadership Center up there. And they have a built in school board room. It would just need to become part of the scope of your project and the appropriate square footage would need to be allotted in there. And ultimately, that square footage just affects your cost. But there's nothing to prevent, prevent that from happening.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir. So may I ask, what, what are next steps then? If we can help the board understand where we can offer some leadership?
I'm not sure, do you want to take that one, Mr. Gordon?
I think at this point, Dr. Heron, we just, we wanted to actually, you know, this being the second phase, we just wanted to provide you with the update. Show you what options are. You have the information there and then it would be any further discussions that you, you could use this. Like we said, it's, it's kind of a roadmap to start planning, budgeting and then actually making. actually making uh, you know, a facility a reality for the future, for your future needs.
Excellent. Awesome. It's all very exciting. And so we appreciate all your, your work and the presentation itself. There's a lot to digest there and I'll continue to look over it. But uh, thank you so much for all your diligent work and we'll look forward to the next phase.
Thank you all very much.
For the process.
Thanks.
All right.
Thank you.
So we'll move on to uh nine point zero two, presentation of the fiscal year twenty twenty-three superintendent's proposed operating budget. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This evening, we are delighted to present the superintendent's proposed budget, which supports over eleven thousand students, three hundred and ninety-five pre-case students, sixteen schools, and more than nineteen hundred employees. Our schools are an integral part of the city of Williamsburg and James City County, and we are fortunate to have the strong support of our community business leaders, families, and elected officials. The city of Williamsburg and James City County, our funding partners, have consistently invested in our schools, our teachers, and our students. Collectively, they fund six, sixty point six percent of our budget. WJCC Schools receives about twenty-nine percent of its funding from the state, plus almost ten percent in state sales tax earmarked for education. Federal funds provides less than half a percent of the WJCC Schools' annual operating revenue. WJCC Schools is a fully accredited school division, and the proposed budget will enable us to build upon that strong history of achievement and continue to address the loss of learning caused by the pandemic. Fiscal year twenty-three proposed budget is aligned with the goals of the strategic plan, elevate beyond excellence. Our priorities include meeting the needs of all students, safety and security, employee compensation, and most important of all, teaching and learning. The proposed budget reallocates positions to the operating budget previously funded by the American Rescue Plan Grant. In support of goal one focused on academic achievement, it includes transitioning nine teachers to the operating budget to maintain class size of the WJCC teacher-to-student ratios. In support of goal four, it moves four counselor positions into the operating budget to sustain the two, two hundred and fifty students to one counselor ratio recommended by the American School Counselor Association. Continuing to invest in educational equity in support of goal two, it includes six special education teachers and seven special education teacher aides to comply with staffing ratios. Our greatest resource in WJCC Schools is our people. Our teachers, administrators, and staff have given all they have to sustain in-person learning this past year. Retaining our excellent dedicated employees and attracting new, new employees is a primary focus of this year's budget. Teachers, administrators, support employees all contribute to the positive environment that it make, that makes it possible for every student to learn. Therefore, in alignment with strategic goal five, this budget includes a bold investment of over seven million dollars in our valued employees to move us closer to the regional market, market average in salaries. Quality teachers are an incredibly short supply as are bus drivers, custodial staff, and support staff. Many have retired or resigned due to the pandemic. If we are to attract and retain the best employees, we must compensate our employees competitively. For example, in teacher compensation, WJCC teachers with a master's degree with five to fifteen years of experience are sixth or last in compensation in our region with salaries at five to seven percent below the average. We have made some ground in entry-level teacher salaries, but many new teachers come to us with ten to fifteen years of experience. So we still have some work to do. As of just today, we had fifty-nine vacant positions across our organization. Seventeen instructional positions, eight of those are teachers, sixteen positions in transportation, aides, and drivers, ten custodial positions, several specialized services positions such as speech-language pathologists, and other support positions posted and currently unfilled. We simply must invest in retaining and attracting new talent, WJCC Schools. The budget also sustains our investment in quality health insurance. Currently, twenty-seven percent of the operating budget is allocated to employee benefits, and more than eighteen million of that directly supports health insurance. For each full-time employee who elects family coverage, WJCC Schools contributes over eighteen thousand per year. Health insurance rates have risen five percent over, since last year. Our employees select insurance based on their family's needs, and more than thirty percent do not elect health insurance through WJCC Schools. That's why a bold salary increase will, that impact, that impacts a hundred percent of our staff and has residual benefits on retirement for years to come is our priority in this budget. This budget proposal is informed by data presented in budget workshops in January. For example, staff presented comparative data on teacher compensation, staffing ratios, and health insurance. Mr. Chair and members of the board, this is truly a budget of need. We know that with full funding, we will be able to meet the essential needs of our students and appropriately compensate our incredibly talented employees. Ms. Ewing, our chief financial officer, has been waiting patiently tonight and will now join me in presenting the superintendent's proposed budget this evening. If possible, I would like to ask you to hold your questions until the end of the presentation so that we may lay out its, our plan in its entirety. Ms. Ewing, over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Heron. It's my pleasure to present to you this evening the superintendent's proposed fiscal year twenty-three operating budget. As you know, considerable work has gone into developing the superintendent's proposed budget. This fiscal year twenty-three plan is a balance of meeting established school board priorities related to the strategic plan, elevate beyond excellence, a review of available revenue, and meeting the division needs for the upcoming fiscal year. Throughout the budget process, school administration made decisions based on one overarching question, what is best for all students and staff? As you know, enrollment is a key component of the budget development process. Enrollment estimates drive our estimated revenue and our staffing model. This view provides a historical perspective with regard to enrollment within the division as of September thirtieth each year. Enrollment fluctuates daily, but September thirtieth is a benchmarking assessment for funding at the state level. We have seen a rebound in enrollment since the decline last year due to the COVID-nineteen pandemic, and we still believe the most conservative approach for budgeting is to base it on the students that we currently have instead of utilizing the future think enrollment projections. Our current year September thirtieth enrollment for Fall ADM was eleven thousand eighteen students, and that is what this budget proposal is built on. Although actual enrollment is still down as compared to pre-COVID enrollment, we need to remember that individual student needs are increasing. I would also like to mention that these enrollment numbers do not include our preschool students, which total three hundred and ninety-five each year. In addition to enrollment data, we use the strategic plan to guide the development of the budget and to ensure that the budget, that the budget supports the needs and goals of the school division, taking into consideration the input of our stakeholders. As we go through the presentation this evening and review expenditure increases, those that are considered mandatory, which is a statutory or contractually obligated expenditure, are notated with an asterisk. All other expenditures are deemed essential in order to continue to deliver high-quality instruction and to sustain division operations. Currently, our state revenue is based on the governor's introduced budget and is estimated to go up by approximately eight million dollars. As a reminder, this is not our final state budget, and these estimates could change based on general assembly action. Here you will see the proposed expenditures related to goal one, academic achievement, college and career readiness of the strategic plan. As shared in our earlier budget work sessions, this includes resources to support classroom learning, our annual computer refresh, and our commitment to the New Horizons Program. One new item reflected here is the increase for school-based funding based on our per-pupil allocations. The current budget reflects a per-pupil allocation for ten thousand eight hundred fifty-eight students, and the fiscal year twenty-three budget reflects a per-pupil allocation based on enrollment of eleven thousand eighteen students. There are also positions related to goal one, which includes nine elementary teachers as well as additional building leadership positions at our high schools and our largest elementary school, Stonehouse. Eight of the elementary teachers are transitioning from our S R grant fund into the operating budget in order for us to maintain our adopted class size ratios. Goal two of the strategic plan focuses on educational equity. Expenditure increases here are primarily for personnel to support the division's special education populations. Safety and security of students and staff remain a priority as seen in goal four. The budget proposal includes transitioning four school counselors from the S R grant funds to the operating budget in order to maintain our staffing ratio of two hundred fifty to one, which is the recommended staffing ratio of the National Association of School Counseling. Finally, under this goal, we've included two psychologist interns in order to build our staffing in this specialized area. In order to attract and retain high-quality employees and remain competitive with neighboring divisions, the budget proposal includes an average seven percent out salary increase for eligible employees. Of this increase, five percent is considered mandatory in order to receive our full revenue allocation from the state, and the additional two percent is essential in order to remain competitive in today's job market. It is also recommended that stipends be adjusted by an average five percent in order to attract staff to take on these additional duties. There are also funds allocated for internal equity adjustments within the technology and the transportation departments. Additional items under goal five include the recommendation for a special education intensive services stipend as well as WJCC's share of the health insurance cost increase, which is based on a twenty percent WJCC share and eighty percent employee share of the increased cost. A new item that you will see under goal five is additional funds to support a rate increase from three point six six percent to four point three seven percent for our retirement contributions to VRS for our non-professional staff, which includes our custodians, bus drivers, bus aides, and maintenance workers. Moving on to budgetary expenditures related to goal six, organizational efficiency and effectiveness, you will see funding to support increases in costs for technology software programs as well as other technology programs to maintain the security of our network. Funds are also included to address anticipated increases in our workers' compensation and general liability insurances as well as an FTE for a data analyst research coordinator. Specific increases related to operations and transportation under goal six include anticipated increases in the cost of school buses, our increased storage space, as well as an FTE for an HVAC control specialist. Also related to goal six, we have estimated savings of just under one point three million as represented on this slide. The majority of this is related to one-time costs budgeted in fiscal year twenty-two for trailer costs and increased unemployment costs that will not continue into next fiscal year. This graphic outlines that our focus is right where it should be, instruction. It represents our expenditures by functional area, and instruction makes up seventy-four percent of our total budget. And as you can see by this graph, eighty-eight percent of our operating expenditures are spent on people, salaries and benefits for our dedicated staff. When you compare the estimated increase in state revenue of approximately eight million to our expenditure adjustments, which amount to approximately nine point six million, the difference is one point six six million, which becomes our request to our funding partners. This amount represents a one point seven percent increase above our current fiscal year twenty-two appropriations from the localities. So where do we get the money in our operating fund? This graphic shows the breakdown of revenue received by funding source. In WJCC Schools, the majority of our funding, approximately sixty-one percent, is reliant on the support of the city of Williamsburg and James City County. Here you'll see all funds for our current budget as well as the fiscal year twenty-three budget proposal. The total of all funds, including operating, grants, state-operated programs, and child nutrition services funds amounts to a total of one hundred eighty-three million, five hundred twenty thousand, two hundred. Overall, there is a nine point six million increase year to year for the operating fund, of which eight million is supported by increased state revenue, and the remaining one point six million will become a request for additional funding from the localities. When you consider the mandated expenditures and those essential expenditures to support equity, safety, and much-deserved employee compensation, we believe that this request is very reasonable. For the grants fund, the fiscal year twenty-three amount of sixteen point six million does include our estimated carryover amount of ten point four million for our S R two and S R three grants, as these grants do not expire until either September twenty twenty-three or September twenty twenty-four. We will provide more detailed information at the next board meeting in March. Next steps in the budget process include a public hearing on Dr. Heron's budget proposal on March first. A joint meeting with our funding partners from the city and county is currently scheduled for March eleventh, with board discussion and approval of the budget on March fifteenth in order to deliver to the city and county by April first, the school board-approved budget. This concludes our presentation, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Oh, yes, yes, thank you. Uh, did you have a disclosure?
Um, as a member of the school board of Williamsburg, James City County, I acknowledge that I ha- may have an interest in the fiscal year twenty-three school budget because my husband is an employee of the WJCC Schools. However, I believe that I am able to participate in the consideration of and vote on the budget fairly, objectively, and in the public interest.
Thank you, Ms. uh, Ms. Hunley. Uh, any comments or questions for Ms. Ewing? I'm sure there are a few. Ms. Hummel?
I just wanted to thank you for um all the asterisks and clarifying mandatory and essential. That was really helpful to me um just for transparency and clarity, so thank you for all of that. And then uh, I guess my other question is with the grants that are carrying through. I mean, I just want us all to be careful about money that's gonna go away and relying on money to fund important positions that I think we just all need to be cognizant of the fact that this money is not gonna be here in the future. And we just need to be careful about that. That's all, just in, in how we fund positions that might have to go away or be cut or um be asking the county and the city for more money in the future, so I just.
Thank you, Mrs. Hummel. That's why we're transitioning some of the positions currently funded in the grant that were getting us to the normal classroom ratios, and also the counselors have been brought into the regular budget this year. So we have a plan as we step down people in particular out of the ground over the next two years, so thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Ms. Young?
Uh, well, just thank you, Ms. Ewing, for, for this. Um, I think the only thing I, I did have a question about. I mean, first, first of all, I missed last meeting, so we're, we're asking for a seven percent average salary increase for our employees. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then um, and then I was going, the, the cost for the VRS, was that less than was expected?
The VRS rate, that's for our non-professional employees, and so VRS does an evaluation for each employer every two years. So we just didn't receive it in time to present that information during a budget workshop. It, it's pretty much stays the same. It doesn't fluctuate that much from year to year. It doesn't fluctuate that much from year to year because it's a smaller group of employees.
Okay. We do owe some money for interrears for VRS, is that correct? Past, I mean, many school districts in the state do. Are we one of those?
I'm sure we are. I don't have that information with me tonight to be able to give you our exact figure of that, but I believe that's one reason why the, because the VRS board adopted lower rates, but the governor's introduced the budget is keeping the VRS rate the same in order to continue to fund the retirement system.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Ordago?
Yeah, I just have two questions. Can you help me understand, when I look at slide ten and we have the line for grants, and then earlier we approved a grant fund for twenty-three something million. How do those, those are not the grants that I'm seeing on this slide. Where are those other grants?
All right, which slides? Did you say slide ten?
Oh, yeah, mine, it's...
Is it the last slide with the, all of the funds?
Yeah, it's slide, page ten, but you have nineteen and twenty together on that page, I guess.
Is it this, is it this slide here? So for, to not be so confusing, I've just presented the adopted budget for fiscal twenty-two because only the grants fund has a revised budget compared to the other funds. So eleven million, one seventy-nine, three eighty was our original adopted budget for the current fiscal year. And during the year, we've amended to account for additional grant funds that we've received.
I'm just wondering, where's that grant fund that we talked about earlier in the agenda that was over twenty-three million dollars? How does that fit into this?
Because the grants fund is the only one that has a revised number. I didn't show it here because the other funds, it would just be the exact same number as the adopted budget. And we are planning to provide more detailed information related to the grants fund at the next meeting.
But also, that was the twenty twenty-two grants fund that we voted on?
It was.
Tonight?
Yes.
So we've had several grants over a couple of years now, and so we're trying to spend down one before we take on them, you know, move into the next one and keep moving to try to spend out one grant first. But Ms. Ewing's going to literally take us through what we've spent so far, what we've spent at all, what's still remaining, and try to give a better understanding of all of that at the next meeting, which I think is important because it stands beside the operating budget as well. And as Mrs. Hummel said, these grant, these grant funds are not going to be here forever, and so we've got to be very careful in our use of them.
Is your question, we voted tonight to approve the twenty-three million. Your question is?
I'm just trying to figure out from it. So I'm not questioning the numbers. I'm just trying to understand, we have a revised grants fund budget of twenty-three million, one hundred and ten thousand, nine hundred and eighty-four dollars, and I just didn't know if that was part of this line that says grants, if that's something separate?
It is. And in the budgets office, if everyone's seat tonight, the grant section does include those revised numbers. But because none of the other funds were amended this year, to keep it simple, I've just reflected the adopt, the original adopted budget for each fund on this slide. I can add a note to it that the grants fund does have a revised budget for fiscal twenty-two, if that would be helpful.
It would also, it would also benefit to realize that we hadn't approved of that, and so wouldn't necessarily to be on this report. We hadn't taken action on that yet.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out the relationship between the two. And then I just had one other question about the employee health insurance. And I know we've been through this in the last few meetings. Is the current breakout, the twenty-eighty, is that essentially an increase in employee cost?
Yes, the health insurance is going up a total of five percent, and we're sharing that five percent with passing eighty percent of that increase on to employees. And the school division will take on twenty percent of the increase.
Will that disproportionately affect more experienced teachers when compared to the salary increase?
If you recall some of the slides, Mr. Baker showed he took a custodian, a teacher, and showed what the increase would be with the five and seven percent raise and what the increase would be in health insurance. So yes, it will impact those on a lower salary more. But we do have several really good choices for health insurance that everyone can choose.
That's what I thought I remembered, I'm just trying to remember. Thank you.
Yeah, I know that the governor's budget is still in flux, and so we don't know exactly what's going to happen there. But they both have talked about increasing teacher salaries. I'm looking at the seven percent. Do you have any idea what percentage of that is going to come from the state, you know, out of their budget?
I don't have that information with me this evening, but I can certainly get that for you.
Yeah, I'm just, it'd be interesting, you know, I think it, for some people, seven percent might be more palatable if they realize that a chunk of that is actually going to be paid for by the state. It's not necessarily, all of it is not going to necessarily come from the localities. I just think that, you know, I think, I'd like to know what that is. Because it may change. I mean, I don't, you know, Northam's budget, it was five percent, wasn't it? And didn't he build it in? You know, you know, it's five percent, but is it a real five percent? Or, you know, it's like, what is, you know, what's Youngkin's budget going to look like in terms of? Because he said the same thing. It's really important to support our teachers and salaries, and I'd really like to know. They probably ought to call Money Mason or some of those guys up there, and they probably would know. But I just think, I think for the public, I think it's, because we see that big number. This is coming from the state. I think it would be helpful to be able to show how much of that seven percent is also going to come from the state, which means it's going to, we're not, we're not paying, we're not fitting the bill for all that stuff, that's all.
Right, so our revenue from the state for the compensation supplement is estimated to be about one point seven million.
Anyone else? Okay.
I really appreciate all your work, Ms. Ewing and Dr. Heron and all of your staff in putting together a, as I look at the proposed budget, it looks like it really projects a forward-facing approach to addressing education in WJCC, leaning out of a pandemic, and recognizing the growth of our community as well and all the things that we need. We had a question earlier, you know, why do we need a data analyst? It's because we're growing, you know, we're not that small community school any longer. There are sixteen schools and bright beginnings and a whole host of students that are leaning out of a pandemic that, you know, have had a hard go of it for two years. And so all the, all the support that we can lend to teachers, faculty and staff to provide a measure of excellence in their education, I'm all for it. I do want to ask though, as we look at the data analyst position, I know that it was asked, I can't recall who, if we'd be able to see a job description, since this is a new job to us. Is that something that we'd be able to see?
Yes, absolutely. We've been working on it and getting some input on it, and that's almost finalized, but we can certainly have that to you before the next meeting.
Excellent, thank you so much. And so we're looking at this as a data analyst slash research coordinator, and that was probably the description before. I'm only really recognizing the research coordinator now, and that coordinator kind of signals to me that perhaps they're managing a staff. Is that the potential here?
I don't believe they'll be managing staff, but they'll certainly be managing a lot of data.
Yeah, okay. And then, I'm curious about the, Ms. Ewing, you've been really kind in providing this information to me, the one point six six mil shortfall. I'm just curious if you know off the top of your head, hopefully I'm not being unkind, the average annual increase that that means from our funding partners. They typically fall within what, one and a half to two percent annually, maybe two point three?
On average, for the past ten years, it's been around two and a half percent.
And where does one point six six fall in that average date? Do you know? Curious. Am I asking the wrong question?
I think it's a fairly low ask in the big picture because generally it's a two point five percent increase per year. I think because we've got some additional funding from the state this year, that impacts it as well.
Right, great. Well, any further questions from the board? Okay, I'm really interested to see what our community has to say about this at our next meeting, I believe, on the first, and then I will be meeting with our funding partners on the eleventh. Is that what we said here? And look at maybe a more robust conversation by the fifteenth as we really get an opportunity to dive into your proposed budget, Dr. Heron. So thank you, Ms. Ewing. With that, let us move on to item nine point, excuse me, ten point zero one, board member comments. Dr. Beers can ask you to lead us off on board comments. I guess that was unfair of you, I apologize. This is my first meeting with you in person this time around, so, but please, thank you.
I've been gone so long, it's like, you know, I... One of the things about, hearing about the proposed budget, I think it's very important. We heard from a lot, we heard from a number of parents, people tonight, talking about a couple, you know, some issues that were very important to them, and I recognize that. And it's too bad they couldn't have stayed longer for, to listen to our proposed budget because this is really important, and it's a really, it's a way that the public can demonstrate that they really are partners in trying to maintain and the excellent school system that we have now. So when there are opportunities that come up, when they can share their thoughts about the budget and hopefully support the budget, it would be really, it would be really helpful if they did that. The other thing I would also mention is that, and it's ongoing in our school system, but the, but the fact that we are constantly upgrading and repairing our plants, our schools, our entrances, our heating systems, this is easily the best kept and maintain. Schools and buildings of any school system in the, in the state, and staff are on top of that continuously. And I just, they really need a shout-out because they're the ones who really, who really keep our facilities top-notch. They really do. And that's really, Mr. Chair, that's about all I really want to say tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Ms. Young?
Yes, first of all, I want to thank all of the citizens that came and spoke tonight. There were a couple of statements that really resonated with me. One of them was make the right choice. And I do believe that the legislature is making the right choice. I just wish they would have gone a little bit further and extended that to our staff and faculty because I feel like freedom of choice is not only a right, but I feel like it's one of the greatest blessings of living in this country. So I hope that in the near future, that the freedom of choice for our faculty and staff will be also instituted. And I say this because one of the things that came up tonight was the mother who was talking about her children who have been denied some of the things that make schools the most enjoyable. One of them is especially for our lower elementary students. That's, that's where I spent most of my years teaching. I'm very concerned about facial cues. You've got students who are looking at adults for facial cues and yet have their faces covered. I'm not sure that I think that that is the right approach. And I don't want to challenge the superintendent because I do support Dr. Heron and our senior leadership. But I'd like us to think about rethinking that because it's not only just elementary students. I mean, if you have a ninth grader, which I did have for many years, especially, facial cues convey an awful lot to students. Elementary school, it's without question that those facial cues are important. But they're at a stage when they're trying to navigate not only academics, but also social aspects of being a human being, and yet we're cutting off the part of the face that shows the most expression, other than the eyes. But I can tell you that I've, as a teacher, you can stop kids dead in their tracks if you give them the right look, and we're leaving half the face off of that. But not only that, it's so much important, she talked about phonics, the formation of the mouth. If you're a speech teacher, you need to be able to demonstrate that to students. I mean, I'm very, very concerned about where we're at. I, one of the things that I guess I want to know is how are teachers going to be notified that it's still a high area, a high area of transmission? I mean, that seems to be the kind of the normal thing with Omicron. It's, there is a high rate of transmission. And whatever happened to herd immunity? We have most of our faculty who is, who has been vaccinated, and yet we are penalizing those who aren't. And I find that reprehensible on our part as a school board and that we haven't come out with a stronger statement. I would like everyone to have the option of being masked or unmasked. I have no difficulty with people that want to remain masked. I think that's their right. But I guess I would challenge, how many of those people feel that strongly? How many of you go out to dinner? How many of you go to Walmart? How many of you go to Harris Teeter? How many of you go to CVS without a mask? And yet you're expecting this from our faculty? And I'm very, very concerned about where this is headed. I do not think we have the right to demand that everyone remain masked. And I hate to drag it back to the legislature and ask them to be much more specific about this because individual rights are being violated. And I am participating, that is a school board member, and I don't appreciate it. Again, I do want to thank the legislature for at least giving parents the right to make those decisions because that should have been granted all along. We have, for a long time, we have listened to one, one part of our citizenry, and we have respected that, at the same time violating the rights of the other part. And I guess before I get any more testy about this, I will be quiet. But I would really like us to think about making the right choice for everyone involved and not just relying on false information. And there's been plenty of indication about some of the things that have come out. And having been a member of this school board for the past two years and having listened to the news going back and forth between the CDC because now the only mask that supposedly is good is the one I'm wearing, which is an N ninety-five. So I think we have to be very careful that we do not end up in the position of violating people's human rights to make choices for themselves. And I guess I will stop there, but that's my comment. And I don't mean to be assertive, but I am very concerned about where we've left our faculty and staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Ms. Hummel?
Sure. First of all, I wanted to acknowledge that our fellow school board member, Kira Cook, is not with us tonight because she's recuperating from a medical procedure. So I just wanted everyone to know that. She asked me to share that information. The other thing I just wanted to talk about, kind of to follow Mrs. Young, is that there are certain things that we may feel very strongly about, and then we... and then we have no control over them, because they are either federal regulations or, like, I think the bus driver situation, correct me if I'm wrong, but like, the, it's a federal regulation that?
There's a federal regulation about masking on transportation, which includes school buses. And, and Mrs. Young, with the greatest amount of respect, the, the reason there's not a change for staff right now, it's, it's actually a, a regulation of the Department of Labor. While still in high transmission, adults must wear masks in the building. And I do know they are, there, there's some information that they're beginning to look at those laws. And we've been in touch with our lawyer in our human resources, who works with human resources, and confirmed that. And that's something that we'll move on as well, once that law changes from the Department of Labor. So, that's not within our control right now. And we will be communicating that to staff, once we know about the other bill going through and make the announcement that the choice is there for students. We'll make it obvious again to staff that that is not changing, because it's Department of Labor.
So, that's, that's just kind of what I wanted to make clear, is that some of the, the decisions that we may personally feel passionately about, we have to comply with federal regulations, Department of Labor, there's a lot of things that we have to comply with. And so, whether we agree with them or not, as a school, as a school system, we need to comply by, with federal law. So, that's all. I'm just saying that. And for many of us, this whole, this whole debate has been, you know, there are both very good sides to, to both sides. And there was two, there were two, you know, an executive order and a conflicting state law, and we needed to get clarity surrounding that, so that we are in a good position legally. So, that's why we asked for patience for people. And now that the decision has been made by the General Assembly, that there's, there's a clarity that we can follow comfortably. So, I just wanted to get that out. And especially, I want to say, I support Mrs. Ordigo's kind of advice for all of us to be respectful of everybody else's choice, and to be respectful of the fact that there are going to be people that are, are going to be nervous tomorrow about this. And just be respectful of everyone's choices. Thank you.
Ms. Ordigo? I'll work away that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I kind of already made a comment along these lines, so I won't repeat myself. I, I would urge especially students, if there are any students listening, or teachers that will be talking to students in the coming days about this, to, to make an effort to be extra kind to someone who's making the opposite choice, because I think that would go, that would go a long way in just showing respect. And I don't want to see a divide that, that I think would end up hurting our students even more, if that was allowed to continue. And I do want to mention, I know it's been mentioned several times tonight by speakers and by fellow board members, a group that has been underrepresented in this discussion thus far, and that, that is teacher, staff, and include even school nurses, who have not and still do not agree with mask mandates. They don't necessarily feel comfortable voicing that opinion in, in public fora, but they do exist, and possibly in larger numbers than is apparent in a setting like this. And I know because we are, we are concerned about retention, that we might just want to keep that in mind, that especially among more experienced teachers, that there are sentiments that, that don't necessarily reflect the, the divide that we've been seeing between teachers versus public. And I just want to keep those teachers in mind, because they are out there and they are concerned. And even, I think Mrs. Young mentioned speech teachers or language teachers that need to be seen. But so many of our teachers have English language learners in their classes, that whether or not they're teaching language per se, they're teaching language, almost all of them. So, I just wanted to point that out as well. Thank you.
Ms. Hunley?
Yes, I want to also thank all the citizens that came out to speak tonight. And I listen very attentively to every, every speaker. And I guess the one that resonated with me also was the mom, and I definitely felt her heart. But as someone who has served children for thirty-six years of my life, and even longer than that, since I wanted to be a teacher since age four, I just wanted to go on public record to say that I have never abused or failed a child. So, that was very hard for me to hear, because I know the heart of, I speak for myself, but I think other board members too. I mean, I go out of my way never to fail or hurt a child or abuse a child. I go out of my way to do and make the best choices in the interest of children. So, I'm very sorry that she felt that way. I did feel her. But I want her also to know my heart, that I will not stand for being accused of failing or abusing a child. One thing that was very, made my heart really happy, was to go to Lafayette to see the play, Almost Made. And at the end of the play, the director, Ms. McCory, had her students that have been in plays before, you know, stand, and if it was your first time in the play, if you're a freshman, sophomore, junior. She had one senior, and that senior said that she was going to go away to school. And I think she's going to have a choice of lots of theater schools. But the one thing she said she wanted to do was come back and be an educator, a theater educator. And she said she wanted to be like Ms. McCory. And that just did my heart well, to know that there are students, and we still have students, that are going to want to come back. And there are going to be students that want to be teachers, even in this trying and tough time. So, that was just a blimmer of hope. It was a God wink for me, that this student respected her teacher enough to say, I want to be like you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Hunley. I too want to extend my thanks to our speakers. I, I think that they were taken aback by your announcement, Dr. Heron. And, and I think that many were, well, we heard many were here to lend their, the immense support in the removal of the mask mandate. And we get that, we've been hearing that in every meeting. And we have been hearing it, we've been reading the emails and responding to emails and taking phone calls and having coffee with members of the public. So, we get that to our speakers. I, I do want to say thank you for recognizing this moment, where a, a very big decision has been made by our superintendent to change the course of action, recognizing the, the prerogative of a General Assembly and a governor to, to change a law that we've been living under in one way, shape or form for the last two and a half years. And Dr. Heron has gotten ahead of that, and I appreciate her leadership in that. And as soon as she started, started to see the activity enrichment, communicating with her senior leadership on how to proceed, so that our principals and their staff and teachers and faculty have the best, the best opportunity to lead and shelter students under a new direction. Having masks have a choice, having masks as a choice, rather than mandated on them. And all that that will entail amongst peer groups, why aren't you wearing your mask? Why, why are you? And all those questions, and so it can get quite sticky. So, I appreciate that Dr. Heron is providing opportunity to lead to her, to her staff at the, at the school level. And with that, I do want to highlight those principals and APs and teachers and even custodial staff and our, our, I want to call them lunch ladies, they're not all ladies, so forgive me. But, so everybody that has a hand in engendering respect and civility and just a calm nature within our schools in the days ahead. For our parents, have that conversation with your, with your students. Everybody's got a strong opinion, many have a strong opinion on this. But as, as we've heard from colleagues here, those, those strong opinions can be shelved, and, and we can get to the business of educating and, and learning, and figure out how to do that on this side of two and a half years of a mask mandate. It, it, it does take a willingness to show respect for another human being and their, their choice. So, I'm looking forward to that, and really for, for evidence of that as we go forward. It was asked, you know, why didn't we make this decision much earlier? Why did it take an act of, nearly an act of Congress, of our General Assembly to do this? And the fact is, is that this division had chosen to recognize and abide by law, right? So, we weren't a division that said, we don't care what the General Assembly of 2021, '22 had dictated. We don't care what Governor Northam had signed as law. We recognize the authority that they have, and we're going to abide by that, whether we agree with it or not. And we did, and we did. The, the, the crux of the matter came when EO2 was, was drafted on day one of Youngkin's, Governor Youngkin, excuse me, his, his tenure in office. And that's why we took, from my perspective, I know this is my perspective and not shared by every one of my board colleagues, but from my perspective, that's what the business of January 20th special call meeting was about. It was about recognizing that we've all upheld our duty to understand the law and apply the law, whether we agreed with the law. And now we have this apparent conflict between an executive order and a law. And so, how do we go forward now, then, January 20th, ahead of a, an impending interpretation from a court, from a high court, mind you? And so, we did do that. We deliberated, we had a conversation, and that was the action that we took. It wasn't dictating to Dr. Heron how she would proceed within SB 1303. It was that this is what we're going to use to guide ourselves, SB 1303, not EO2. Four agreed, two did not, and that was the will and the action of the board. And so, now we have a new law, and we recognize that, Dr. Heron recognizes that. Before I get ahead of myself, we don't have a new law yet. That's my last point. But we potentially will have a new law, and we're, we're going to abide by that. We have regulatory guidance that dictates, you know, how school buses are operated and how teachers work in the workplace. And while I share the sentiment of some of my board members here, board colleagues, unfortunately, that's just not a space that we can get into yet. And I recognize that, and I want to share that with the public, that we're going to hear you. We hear you, we're going to hear you. But it's the same as, you know, that, that old space that we're in regarding SB 1303. We have to abide by the law, and we will, until we're provided the, the option to go otherwise and to have that discussion and allow Dr. Heron to lead, lead out in the best way she sees fit. So, I misspoke earlier, we don't have a law yet. Last point is that the General Assembly is still at work. And for our community to recognize that, our community to recognize that, as soon as we see action from the House now, the Senate's voted on 739, action from the House moving forward and potentially agreeing with the Senate, that will become law. And we're, we'll be looking for Dr. Heron and her staff to message that appropriately. It sounds like she'll do that rather quickly. That's all I have, and let me move on. My screen is dead, I talked asleep. I think we're moving on to.
Upcoming events.
Upcoming meetings. Thank you. Okay, upcoming events, I apologize. So, on March 9th this year, 3:30 PM, 21st Century and Career Ready Advisory Committee meeting at Legacy Hall in Newtown, or virtually, sounds like you got the choice. And then, on March 10th, Special Education Advisory Committee meeting at 6:30 virtually. And then upcoming meetings, looking at closed session and public hearing and a work session with action items on March 1st at the NX, Room 300 at the NX. On March 11th, the joint meeting with the, with our funding partners at the city and county. That's going to be at the James City County Rec Center, meeting rooms A, B and C. So, the large space, large meeting space there. And then on March 15th, closed session and regular meeting back here, closed session in Room 300 at the NX. And then the regular meeting in the, where we are at James Blair Middle School. With that, I think we are adjourned.